Okay.
Start our work session?
Okay, at the end of our last work session. It was just a few of our artists who wanted to be appointed. Um, but we spoke to the free aldermen and said that you want to go through this process that we started. And so I had prepared for the next step of that. So we're going to go over this information tonight. At any point, if you ever sit here, so that we can actually do this tonight, we have to continue down this path and go back to kind of looking at buying items and considering budgets in a more traditional way. A couple of years ago, I did a survey. And the question was, what do the citizens want? How do they feel? And we got 100 responses. Some filled out forms and some digital electronic. The first sheet is, I feel like I'm on Family Feud. Survey says, uh, this, this is what, what they said to these questions. Now, there are a lot of other questions that don't convert very well into this format. A lot of individual responses. You said, you know, what are the five things that you like the most, or, and then people wrote them in. This, this kind of sums up the gist of the, of the survey. And, um, so the, the survey questions were put together by a committee that represented a lot of the people from different walks of life and different industries. We had bankers and the hospital was represented, the school district was represented, and the community center was represented for recreation and, you know. And so they came up with this, this series of questions. And the, kind of the first question was, how important to you is it that St. Genevieve be a place that, or two? And the top response was 85% of the people said that they wanted to be a safe place to live and work. So public safety was the number one priority. They all like and want the school system to say, 75% wanted to us continue with the quality of school education we have. They want it to be a place to raise children. They want to work in the community where they live. And further, when you drill down in this data, you know, I found a number of people who aren't working where they live, so. They, a, a large percentage of them bemoaned the lack of recreational opportunities for teenagers. And that's been a problem since I was a teenager. Somebody's always saying, we've got to have a place for the teenagers to go. Problem was then, and maybe now, is teenagers never want to go where the adults want them. So, you know, we, um, they, they want good neighborhoods. Sometimes the definition of good, obviously, is up for grabs. Uh, and they want more attention paid to maintaining streets and sidewalks. Now, there's a, a longer list than that, but this is everything that had a 55% or more response, a positive response. So I didn't include the things when it got down to 3% of the people said something. So kind of a follow-up question to that, and again, it came much deeper into the survey, was please rank the following services and amenities, one being the most important. Uh, and there were 14 of them. And so the, the ranking you see there is, kind of where they ranked out of 14, because there's a, about, you know, a number of possible responses that you could, you could give. And, um, so we averaged those out, and this is the priority order that, that resulted. So healthcare was the highest priority. Law enforcement was close behind. Fire protection was close behind that. Outdoor recreation was relatively high. This affordable housing question came up, and this was kind of before there was any publicity about the Industrial Development Corporation or anything we've talked about. Indoor recreation, road maintenance, trails, tourism, library services, and social services fall out in, in this ranking, and that's the complete score for all of them. So I give this to you because if you're going to, and we're going to talk about tonight, kind of setting goals and priorities, I thought it would be helpful to kind of have this guidance, because at least 24 months ago, this is what people felt.
So it's from 2017?
Uh, 2016, so it was three years ago. So later in the survey, and I apologize with small print, but it's the only way I can get everything on this second sheet, was we asked them, okay, well, here's kind of your, your priorities, your, what you'd like to see and things you think about the community. How do you think the community's doing in these areas? And, um, and I didn't call this down, I just reproduced the page in answering the question. Uh, how well is the community doing to provide convenient access to city services? You see that most people thought we were doing pretty well. Those who thought it was poor or very poor was, was low. The raise children question there, again, you know, 80, or, 80% felt that the town's a good place to raise children, a good place to work. You start to see some slippage here, uh, for the reason that we all know is, uh, the diverse housing. Again, this score kind of reflects their desire to have more affordable housing, because there's a sense that we don't have as much of it as, as we need. Safe to live and work, uh, you know, 87% of the folks think that we're doing well. We're very well in that. Valuing the history, no surprise there. Anybody who says St. Genevieve doesn't value its history is not paying attention. So it's respect and tolerance of all citizens, uh, kind of in the mid-range. Willing to help people with special needs, again, it's in the mid-range, kind of weighted to the, the, uh, the well category. Provides opportunities for continuing education. Now, that's a, I, I don't know, is anybody surprised at that?
I, I am surprised by that number, yeah.
Okay.
I would, I would ask Gary what he thought about that with opportunity for Missouri A-plus program. I mean, that's, that's pretty big.
Yeah. I don't know.
I would say that, that a lot of respondents probably didn't consider that. I, just based on the number I'm seeing, but.
There's no, is there a place for adult education without having to go out of the county?
Not really. They do a little adult education in the evenings and in the summertime at high school. That's all I'm really aware of, but I don't know anything else. And it's specific, specific courses when they're available.
The school facilities, again, not much surprise there. Recreational opportunities for children, there's a little slippage there. Other than the community center, you know, we, our, our soccer fields and limited playgrounds is pretty much what we have. Um, well, we've got the ball fields for the smaller people. Uh, that's the same for teenagers. So one of the peers then, one of the areas the citizens are concerned, and they think we aren't doing that well, is in recreation across all age groups. Except they think we're doing a little better with seniors. Good neighborhoods, a little more, few, more neutrals there than I would have expected. Maintaining streets and sidewalks, uh, could they, that's fair. Opportunities for dining out and entertainment, again, kind of in that middle, weighted a little bit towards the poor side. Shopping opportunities, that's obvi, that's a complaint. In the written comments in the survey, there were lots of those. That's why I'm not surprised that this showed that way. Opportunities for arts and culture is kind of in the middle. Positive community image, um, you know, we admit that, pretty much in the well, it's neutral to well. And, um, the overall landscaping and the appearance of the community is in that same So as you're thinking in terms of what our goals and objectives should be, this information should give you some indication of what your constituents, or at least 100 respondents, were feeling about how well we've done to date, and whether we want to emphasize things that address some of the areas where they think we aren't doing as well as we, as we should be doing. So the purpose tonight was to establish with kind of this information in mind and the information that we looked at two weeks ago, what, what should be our, our goals? This information is taken from a number of sources relative to kinds of things other communities have, have looked at. I'm not saying these should be our goals, but just to kind of give you a frame of reference that puts this together, so you could think of, kind of what are the categories and how might we express our goals? So, survey says, uh, fire and police is the top priority. So safety and security of the community is a goal that is consistent with what the citizens have said that they want. Uh, I kind of have put down some bullet points as to what that might mean. I don't know if you want to add something to this, change it, reconsider it? I asked you to think in terms of goals before, from our last meeting and coming to this meeting. Did anybody come up with anything that you think we should, resist me Martin Tomlin's
First of all, I want to commend you on the survey. One out of 14500 people concerns me, so that's 2.2%. That's not great, but it's a good start.
Pretty average.
How did we go about surveying them? Did we send out with the water bill, or did we, how did we go about getting this survey?
It was a combination of things. We created a survey monkey account, for instance, and sent that information out through our newsletter and through our website and whatever. I went around and attended people, meetings where people congregated. Uh, and then we had them here in City Hall and asked everybody who came in to fill out a water bill that they would like to fill out a survey. The only thing we didn't do is like canvas, go door to door.
So it's a good sample. It's a representative sample, you'd say, of the population?
No.
Okay.
I think it's a little, you know, any, any surveys weighted
skewed.
To, to the people who are willing to respond. Uh, and, and so I think, you know, if you wanted to get closer to, to it, you're going to have to go out and knock on doors.
Okay.
But not everybody comes in to pay their bills, not everybody responds to electronic communications, not, you know, it's, so that group would be, probably didn't get picked up.
With that being said, I think it's, it sounds right about where I feel it needs to be. The only thing I was looking at was when I was looking at the comprehensive plan that we asked to have printed out and disseminated to the alderman. Uh, this is almost dead-on accurate, but, um, one of the big concerns I'm wondering about, if we want, if we want to start addressing, might be economic, economic development, which is strong and diverse economy at the very bottom here. I've been talking to IDC and some people, and housing is also an issue of concern, is not enough rooftops and things of that nature. So in addition to this good work, I'm wondering if we, how we feel about, it's already on there, economy, and how we feel about, is there anything we can do with housing?
Well, we've had the discussion about, and I, I feel like I'm preaching here. I believe in the free market system that we have, and I know that no market is perfect. I hear from the director of the hospital and some others at school, you know, I, I have employees who'd like to live in town, but there's just not sufficient housing for them, so they end up living in Festus or Farmington or in the county and, and have to drive, you know, 30, 45 minutes to work. On the other hand, if there's a pent-up demand, if there, if there, if those people are looking for housing, you'd think the market would, people who invest in those kinds of things would be building them to satisfy that demand. But it, it hasn't been happening. Now, a lot of the reason why it hasn't happened more recently is just because the housing market crashed, and, you know, it's taken a while to kind of climb out of that. The other thing I hear is that St. Genevieve kind of as a county, as an economic area, doesn't have a lot of, they have home builders, uh, but not really risk takers who are going to buy a piece of land and subdivide it and put water and sewer in and try and build homes and, and sell them.
That has a lot to do with a payback period, you know, and the initial investment to do something like that. I mean, we've talked about these lots out here off of progress, you know, and, uh, it's hard to get people to go and invest that kind of money, you know, that it takes to put the streets in, put the sewer.
It should be a short payback period if the demand's there.
We've got lots of Valley Springs.
I understand they're building four spec homes in Valley Springs. That's what David told me, that they're
I know of two. And one Ford base.
Yeah.
I think there are four spec homes being built in St. Genevieve.
Yeah, four spec homes being built in St. Genevieve, I don't know.
And a lot would tell, a lot, we'll, we'll learn a lot
Yeah.
For the days on market for those houses.
Right.
And that's coming up here pretty soon.
I've noticed some in, in just my neighborhood, there was, I know that there was three to four, well, there was three pretty hard-to-sell properties that sold, you know, so.
So, I mean, from, from government's point of view, as the city attorney has reminded us from time to time, that you can't be in that business.
No, exactly right.
But, but you can adopt policies and programs that provide an environment where people who can be in the business or want to be in the business can, can prosper. And, and like, you know, I, I know people, well, Carl, the guy that's building the rental house here on, on Jefferson.
Yeah, Merchant.
A merchant.
Yeah, Merchant Street.
He said, you know, I, I live in Jefferson, or he lives in, he's, I have property in Jefferson, I'm not building in Jefferson County, it's too difficult. Well, I think our job is to make it not difficult. You know, enforce your regulations, but be reasonable in how you do it, and timely, so that they don't have to wait for approvals, and it's that kind of thing we can do.
And ours don't cost a whole lot of money.
No, it doesn't cost very much.
You know, Martin, you mentioned also and stuff, a lot of people that, you know, come to work at the hospital, they live in Festus and stuff, and it's not only affordable or accessible housing, but it's the opportunity other than just home. It's places to eat, places to shop, places for entertainment, all of these things, you know, affect it and stuff, because like you said, there are buildable lots here in Valley Springs, dozens of them.
Right. So.
It's a combination.
Trying to keep, keep on point here, is we're going through this so we can, the next step, look at the expenditures of the city and relate them to where we think our highest priorities are. Gary has said, well, I think economic development is kind of a fundamental goal, because if you don't have the jobs, you don't have the houses, and if you don't have the houses, you can't have the shopping and recreation, and, you know, so it all kind of starts with the job. And, and I think, you know, we've been talking about something the city did that helped promote that. Uh, on the other hand, I, I don't think we can replicate that, but, you know, what else, what else can we do? We engage with the people who are involved in economic development. We don't have, we talked about this last time, we don't have the budget to fund a full-time economic development activity, but there's state and regional actors. Uh, I think responding to a question that Gary gave me earlier, I think the bankers and the other kind of critical actors in, in economic development activities are, you know, they're all doing what, what, what they do. We talked about listing the property with a commercial realtor, and that's another, another option we'll talk about later. I can, you can make that your number one goal, but I don't see how it directly, how it relates to the expenditure of our, of our resources.
Well, I would, I would add on to what Gary said, though. Uh, number one, to talk about houses before business, I think that's kind of the cart before the horse. That's just me personally, though. And in, in budget conversations, maybe, maybe we need to put a focus on economic development in whatever way we can. If, if that's not funded now, maybe it needs to get funded somehow. Uh, you know, I know we're not printing money, but if, if we continue to not look hard at that, I think we're, we're not doing everything we can do. That's what I think.
What are, what are our economic development activities now? Who's doing what?
Sandra has an inventory of all the properties that are available. She has the data on the city, the workforce, and all the information that a decision-maker would have to make, and she's engaged with the people at the state and regional level who are actively seeking to get people to move into the southeast region or the state of Missouri. But we don't, we don't, we don't, the other, and the other things economic developers do, and also Sandra's also involved in the program for retaining existing employers and assisting them if they have expansion needs. Well, we don't, we don't market the city in the areas where you would market it for business and industrial growth. We don't, we don't go on marketing trips with the Missouri partnership to Chicago. We don't, there's a, there's a, there's a whole range of things that other people, communities that are engaged actively in economic development do that we could do if that became your priority and that's where you wanted to put resources. It's basically putting a salesman on the street and sending him out there.
Didn't they try that at one time?
I wasn't here, I've heard stories. They had a full-time economic development professional and
It was a shared cost with the county, I believe. Fifty-fifty.
Was that effective?
No.
Apparently not.
Doesn't mean we can't try it again, or at least talk about it.
Well, you know, the economic development, like any marketing, you know, you, you plug away and, and hope you hit, you strike oil. Rarely that big, major employer relocation into a community. It's, it's usually the matrix for economic developers are little things. And unfortunately, it, it lacks the, the measurables to, I mean, you can't, you can't say, I'm going to pay you and your success depends upon a manufacturer moving to town. So you pay the person to do certain work, and then you have to figure out a way to evaluate it to see if you're getting the result you want, and it's always hard with any marketing program to get a one-to-one relationship between that dollar spent and that tax dollar earned. I mean, it's just hard.
But if we, if we go that route, we're looking at increasing revenues long-term, rather than every year coming back and figuring out where we can cut. So I feel like if, if we need to make some kind of an investment, we need to look at investments that are going to benefit us in the long run.
Well, in that previous position, I think it only lasted two and a half or three years before they gave up on it.
Which was not
Yeah, you're not getting
That's just enough time to get the pipeline filled with your marketing efforts.
So I, I reached out to, and I've had lunch and dinner with a couple of officers of the IDC, and so we know, and we know, because I know Martin works with them a lot, so we know what they, what they do. I reached out today to the chamber, because I've been a member forever, but I never really asked what they do for economic development. When I was old, younger, um, and involved, I thought they did more with economic development, Chamber of Commerce, and I, I was a little surprised that they aren't as involved with bringing in business as I thought they were, or they're supposed to be. Um, so anyway, I got some information back from, from Adina, and I'm wondering if we, I'm trying to get together a laundry list, and Martin's been good, and I contacted Sandra, and although I did just contact them recently, and I'm just trying to get the ball rolling, more to come. I'm also meeting with the IDC and things of that nature. I'm trying to get players together who are all experts in economic development locally. Martin's been good enough to provide regional and state as well, which is awesome. But I think what I'd like to do is to try and meet with all the players. I think we should get all the players together, invite them to come speak with us, to kind of get everyone on the same page as to what we're doing for the betterment of the community. And I think we need to start thinking about utilizing our resources that are available to us locally, and then possibly expanding a bit with resources if we need to start marketing ourselves. We now have a, is it 17 million dollar water park at this point?
It's still 10.
10 million dollar water parks. So what I'm saying is, and we have Progress Parkway with infrastructure, and I know I've been trying to get it going and have been a little unsuccessful with some developers, but I'm still working that angle. So, I mean, if a city wanted to try and get a hotel, for example, because we may, we may need more places to stay, how do we as a city go about recruiting franchises here? How do we go, I don't know. I'm, I'm asking. So what I was hoping to do is try to bring, bring the players together, pick their brains, kind of make a laundry list of things that they do, try to orchestrate it a little bit, maybe help each other out, and then identify opportunities from there. So I'm asking you guys to help me think about
You know, four-night lodging is discussed a lot, because
Right.
Four or five times a year, there's no room at the end.
Right.
But it's just four or five times a year. So you have to consider the occupancy rates over the full
Right.
Full, full period, so.
Anyway, that's what I've been doing, and so that's, I just wanted to share it with you. Um, I just started getting the ball rolling. Um, so I'm looking forward to work with Sandra and you guys and Gail's. That's what I have to say. I just, I just think we need to start marketing ourselves. We need to start bringing money here.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I agree with everything that you're saying there. I mean, that, some sort of economic development really ties into just about all of the woes that we have here. I mean, as far as the housing goes, whatever it takes to bring businesses here, I mean, there's, there's, we got to get industry in here. I mean, there's, the mines going, going in at Farmington, they had a job fair the other day, 400, over 400 people there in the first two hours. I mean, um, there's people all over Facebook looking for rental on, over in that area because of this, this one, one player.
You say the mine, the sand mines?
No, they're cobalt mines.
Cobalt.
Cobalt mines. And, um, so I mean, it's, the growth that's kind of coming in that area just because of the expectancy of that is, is fantastic.
It's actually Frederick County.
Do it.
Yeah, the mining.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a little bit outside, but it's in that general area, yeah. So, you know, that's, that's the, the key to just most of our woes would be, is, is that, so. You know, I can think back years ago, out off of Trotman Drive back there, you know, and several buildings pop up out there, but that was basically done by a private developer. You know, part of our problem is, most of those private developers like that have aged and are not actively doing things like that, but there was a lot of what happened.
What happened?
They got old.
No, what happened to the economic activity that supported No, what happened to the economic activity that supported that, those investments?
There was just a couple of people out contacting people or something that got those businesses interested. There's, I think, pretty much every one of them was either a startup or new.
Well, he built the spec buildings, too.
Right.
I know there was one at least that sat there vacant for many years.
So, I'm hearing economic development's one of your highest priorities.
It touches everything else.
Okay, it's number one. Safe, and the drinking water and wastewater disposal, the credit of the city of St. Genevieve and the decision several years ago to fund a multi-year rate schedule. We're, we're in good shape. So, when a major component breaks as we concede night, we are able to fix it and keep operations going and continue to build a reserve. And I mean, it's, that's, that's in good shape. So, that, that should be a very low priority as far as budgeting is concerned, because you can't do anything with that money anyway except spend it where it's earmarked. Next?
Well, I don't want to take away at all from the public safety and so that. And I don't want to ever like come across like I'm taking it for granted. It's, it's an assumption of mine that we live in a very safe environment and we need to stay that way. We have a good place to raise kids and that, that's fantastic. So, public safety is paramount as well. I mean, I'm not taking away from any of these, right? I want to make sure I reiterate that or emphasize that. So, when we say, when we say things like, public safety are important, so for example, economic development, I think, is just like what you guys said, though, it impacts, it touches all of these. But I'm not changing your priorities, so.
Not my priorities.
Our priorities. So, I still think economic development is kind of like the umbrella. We need that to kind of raise us all up. But safe environment, good healthcare. But I'm trying to think, how do we as a city budget all these things?
Well, it's not just budget, although it is budget for the purposes, direct purposes, but it's also policies. I mean, we had a hospital come and talk about, you know, smoking ordinance. And we decided that it wasn't, you know, there are only two places where smoking is allowed anyway. And it was a solution looking for a problem. But it's those kinds of policy decisions that will, can enforce a priority for a healthy community.
Okay, so let me just reiterate exactly. So, healthcare, law enforcement, fire protection, I concur. And I don't want to come across like I'm taking them for granted at all. I just feel comfortable because we had such a good force here as well. City water and sewer, exceptional, so okay. Outdoor recreation, I'm kind of feeling, help me out, I'm kind of feeling outdoor recreation's kind of getting managed because we now have a phenomenal community center. We have a water park, we have all kinds of cool things. So, that hits, that hits that as well. I don't know what else we could possibly do in St. Genevieve as far as the city to improve outdoor recreation. Somebody throw me a bone.
I agree.
Well, you're looking at twenty sixteen numbers, though.
No, I know that, but I, I'm modifying with saying this was, this was up there.
We could replace and upgrade the walking trail in the park.
True.
And we can put exercise stations along the walking trail, which improves the recreation, but also supports health and
My thing, too, is with this, what's coming up with the fish and wildlife game, but we'll, we'll tie in with that levee. You know, a trail on top of, you can already walk and I've had, I've been on the levee a lot with the high water. There's people using the levee, there's people riding their bikes on the levee. I seen a lady with her child, pushing her child on the levee, you know, and it's a, so you're there, that's, I think we're going to cover that very well.
Yes, so that being said, Mayor, I agree. So, that to me, and I know this is a three-year-old survey, and I've done lots of surveys and research, so that's why I was asking questions. So, to me, outdoor recreation, trails and sidewalks, paths and tourism, kind of rock can all be bucketed or circled because we are doing good things with the national park and the levee, I think so. I feel good by saying, one, two, three, circle, good, we're managing those, okay? In our current budget, I think. I also think the healthcare, law enforcement, protection are fantastic. So, I'm asking the board and the administration, so to speak, what else do we think we should prioritize? If we think it's economic development as the umbrella, and we still agree with what we have here. So, we have economic development, healthcare services, law enforcement, fire protection. Then we have basically kind of like outdoor recreation, trails and sidewalks all coupled together. What's next?
Well, infrastructure is a very important part of, you know, some sort of industrial, you know, focus. I think that's very, a very important issue that needs to be highly up there.
Okay. Could you, could you expand on that a little bit?
Well, sorry, I mean, basically, any, any business that's looking to come in here is, is going to be expecting some sort of
Oh.
All right.
That's ours, no. And to wrap this up is, I think where we're at right now is we, we need to maintain what we have. We need to continue to do what we're doing and maintain what we're having. We have an outstanding police department.
Yes.
We have good services, very good services here at City Hall. We have a lot of visitors come to our town and they spend a lot of money, you know. So, what we need to do is, I agree with this, you know, but realistically, you have to look at the demographics of our little city here, where we've been in the last thirty years, where we're projected to go in the next twenty-five, and be a little bit realistic. You know, we're landlocked and we're
At the next step, you're going to have to decide whether, without any specific numbers, if I have a hundred thousand dollars to spend and I have three priorities, how much do I give to the priorities? And you can say economic development's your number one priority, priority generically. But are you not going to, going to spend money cutting the grass and the, you know, so in the flood buyout property so you can fund
You got to get the money somewhere, right?
Yeah. And that was the point of trying to set your priorities here, these goals, is to put them in some order that relates to the budget. And I think when you do that, economic development starts falling down, and that's unfortunate because it's an uncertainty. It's something we'd like to see. But what are we not going to do in order to get?
I agree, but if we don't get it, we're not going to be able to afford to do anything more than what we are doing.
You know, Gary, back to what you first talked about, you know, looking at all of our opportunities and stuff. Why can't we join together with the IDC, with the chamber, with the county, you know, Farm and Advisory Committee, something to you know.
Bingo.
Something to, you know, be a unified effort and stuff where we can all, you know, share our resources and stuff, a little bit we have, a little bit they have.
Let's, we'll, we'll work on that for the next two weeks. We're going to do another work session.
I want to schedule them forty-five minutes before our regular meeting until we get done. But at some point pretty soon, I'm going to lose interest because we got to move to, you know, how many dollars where? I mean, that's, 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 otherwise, we're going to be right back in July without having established priorities and giving guidance to the departments about how to structure their next year's budget.
But there again, we're, we're not going backwards. We're moving straight ahead. We're continuing to maintain what we have and everything's going to be all right.
So, let's just adopt the same budget for next year that we got this year?
I'm all for that.
Okay, done.
I'm not, it's the board that decided.
You know, because we already know we're short that monthly check.
All right, we're going to close this in. Let's, you guys got a few minutes to, you all have a few minutes to get ready for the next meeting.